Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 25th of 2022 ZBA meeting. Our next meeting will be June 29th, 2022 at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And if everyone could please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patrick, if you could please read in the preamble.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed the petitions in the order they are listed in the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The Chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussions will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening, but the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate in vote on their request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones. Thank you.
For anyone that's looking to speak tonight, if you could please raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth? Alright, thank you. Alright, so we're going to be moving our annual meeting to the end of the agenda. So we'll start off with item number four. Richard Calica, petitioner, appeal from administrative decision regarding the planning board from a decision made on April 5th, 2022 pertaining to KTK Realty Trust LLC site plan, parcels located at 20-Star Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts Tax Map 3D-1 Lot 12. And actually, before we get started, Chuck, if I could have you sit in for Rodney? And Lynn, are you recusing yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So are you the petitioner?
I am one of three petitioners. The other two petitioners, can you speak as quick, please?
I apologize, yeah. If you could just make sure the microphone is lit up and just state your name.
My name is Richard Calica. I'm with Calica LLC.
Okay.
I also am here representing Dodi LLC.
Is the microphone not on? Yeah, can you just make sure you press the button so it lights up bright green?
There we go.
Thank you.
Technology. Hi, I'm Richard Calica. I'm with Calica LLC. I'm here with two other parties. I'm here with Eric Stevenson, who represents CMI Leasing Corporation, and I'm here with Larry Dodi, who represents the Dodi Group LLC. We also have an LLC, LLS with us tonight, Cynthia Bové.
Okay. And just so you are aware, because one of our board members had to recuse themselves, we are down one member. So we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to choose to continue if you want tonight, or we can have a continuance where this is moved to the next meeting, where hopefully we will have a full board. Because the issue is three people will have to vote in favor for our motion to pass, and with one less member, there's more of a chance that it may or may not pass. So just want to give you that option.
If it ends up with a 2-2 tie, it's denied.
Okay. And that question, do you mind if I just take two minutes and talk to the other people that I'm with?
That's absolutely fine with me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good. I want to thank you all for your humble time, but I'm going to take you up on your offer, and we'll postpone when you have a larger contingency.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Chairman, may I speak to this? I represent the petitioner. I don't believe there's any requirement that this, it's a courtesy I think you're extending. I know if you were quorum that you have, I don't think this meeting needs to be, I don't think it needs to be postponed.
I would ask that you come to the microphone, please.
Come to the mic.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry. My name is, Mr. Chairman, my name is Paul Alfano. I represent the person who's trying to get his plan approved, and I'm not aware of any law that requires you to do what you're doing. In fact, I think you have a quorum tonight. You've got four members, I believe, with you?
No, a quorum for the ZBA is three members, and if, for this case, is only four seated, so they would have to have, in cases like this, petitioners are allowed to defer to another night.
I think that may be more of a custom than a law. I'm not aware of a law that requires that. You've got a, you have a quorum, correct?
They do have a quorum, yes.
So let's go. I mean, this is, there's a lot at stake here, and so I think you're obligated to go forward if there's a quorum. I know that a lot of boards will do that as sort of a courtesy, but it's not required, and I'm speaking up opposed to it. You've got a quorum, I think you've got to go forward with this tonight. I would ask you to, sir.
Well, so here's what we can do. We can make a motion, because we have to do that anyway.
Okay.
And we will decide whether or not, as a board, we are going to continue this.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. So I'll go ahead and close the hearing at this point. Chuck?
I'm a little confused who the petitioner was.
That gentleman there?
This gentleman right here.
Yes.
I am one of three petitioners, sir.
And the lawyer is representing who?
The developer.
The developer.
Who's trying to develop this real estate. And he's objecting to it. He's filed this appeal.
Yeah, so this appeal was an appeal from the planning board that was made to the zoning board, and so the petitioner in our case is the one making the appeal, whereas that attorney represents KTK Realty, the company that they're appealing against, the petitioner's appealing against.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So I will ask the Board, what are your thoughts on a continuance?
I agree with the attorney. I think it should be, we should hear it tonight. I think we have, we have four. I, he is, if it is considered a courtesy, I mean, it's something we've offered in the past, but if there's legal precedent, that's my opinion.
Ben, any thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with what you said.
Alright. Do I hear a motion then to?
I agree as well.
That we should hear? Hear it tonight? Okay. Well, I still would need a motion to deny the continuance.
Okay, I make a motion to deny the continuance and hear the hearing, or hear the appeal for administrative decision regarding the planning board decision made on April 5th, 2022 pertaining to KTK Realty Trust LLC site plan. The parcel is located at 20-Star Drive in the I Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts Tax Map 3D-1 Lot 12.
Okay?
Seconded.
Alright, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Chuck. All in favor of denying the continuance? And I oppose, so 3-1-0, so.
I apologize.
I just want to add, it wasn't my idea.
Okay.
Understood. So the next thing before we do this presentation, so I do have to let you know, Mr. Calica, we did meet with our legal counsel, and we had a discussion over the RSA, which essentially governs the zoning board's impact on planning board topics, which is 676-5 Paragraph 3, which, I could certainly read aloud if you like, which discusses the conditions by which a zoning board is allowed to hear an appeal for a planning board decision. And that can only happen if there is a zoning ordinance involved in the planning decision, which means there would have to be referenced some type of zoning ordinance. So our counsel has advised us that we actually should not be hearing this, because there are no zoning ordinances identified as part of the decision made by the planning board. So I can't speak for the board, but what I can say is that I would likely be voting against the appeal, because I don't believe that it's in our jurisdiction. And I'm going by the advice of the attorney that represents us in town. So you have the option. We can still talk about it tonight, but like I said, we've been advised by our legal counsel that we cannot technically vote on an appeal unless it pertains to a zoning ordinance, which the decision that was made by the planning board is not pertaining to any zoning ordinances. So I give you the option.
The option is again what?
You can essentially rescind your appeal that's being heard by the zoning board, or we could go through this, and the rest of the zoning board may feel the same way as I do, given that we all met with our legal counsel.
Okay.
So I do have to notify you of that.
And that's Drummond, Woodson, and McMahon?
I'm sorry?
That's Drummond, Woodson, and McMahon?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me find out what the group says. Okay.
Withdraw.
Alright, thank you very much.
Reluctantly.
I'm sorry?
Reluctantly.
Understood. Before we hear Agenda Item Number Five, it's been brought to our attention that Agenda Items Six and Seven have requested a continuance to the June 29th meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and read those in and ask the Board to vote on a continuance. So the two in question are Black Diamond Development LLC petitioner and 744 DW LLC owner, variance under Section 2.02.3B of the zoning ordinance to permit an industrial warehouse use in the C2 General Commercial District, and Section 3.02 to allow for a rear setback of five feet, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 744 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial District Tax Map 7E, Lot 35, Case ZBA 2022-16, along with variance under Section 2.02.3B of the zoning ordinance to permit an industrial warehouse use in the C2 General Commercial District for 734 DW Highway, Tax Map 7E, Lot 31, ZBA Case 2022-17. Do I hear a motion for the continuance of these two variances? Second. Alright, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Patrick. All in favor? Aye. Aye. 5-0-0. Those two are now being continued to June. So now I'm going to step back into Agenda Item Number Five, which is Deborah Adamanscheck, variance under Section 2.02.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a mixed-use residential bakery, or residential and bakery, in the C2 General Commercial District. The parcel is located at 4 Mound Court in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, Elderly Housing, Overly Districts, Tax Map 4D-4, Lot 2, Case ZBA 2022-15. Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Matt Peterson here with Teach-Norsham Associates, representing Bite Meat Cupcakes, variance application in front of the Board here tonight. This parcel, if you take a look at the aerial there, I think probably most of you know, and you didn't see the car as you drove in, the hot pink car in the parking lot, and the hot pink building in town. I think they're the only two that you see around. So we're at 4 Mounds Court. This is a, you know, in between Greeley Street and DW Highway. It's Tax Map 4D-4, Lot 2.
I have to say, I love the license plate, by the way. That caught me off guard as I was coming in tonight. Whoa!
This parcel is about 26,915 square feet, or about .61 acres in size. It's located within C2 General Commercial District, the Aquifer Conservation, the Elderly Overly District as well. My clients purchased this in 2013. Prior to them purchasing this, this has been a mixed-use property for pretty much probably a few decades here. A couple times, the building's been spun and done different things on the property and that type of stuff. It was unknown to my client that they were, you know, living there and working there without the proper permits and stuff like that from this board. Even so much so, these people have done their homework, and their tax cards even says mixed-use residential and commercial, so they kind of thought that they were all set on there. But it was brought to their attention by Robert that it's not. So we're here tonight to try and fix that issue that's been happening for, like I said, quite some time now, and use the residential mixed-use. This is the lady and her husband that live on-site. Their daughter is also living on-site with them, and they run the cupcake shop in the building just out front. At one point, it actually had two different addresses, I guess, two, one for DW Highway and one off of Mounds Court. What we'd like to do is just keep this simple here and kind of open it up to questions that the Board might have, but we're looking for a variance to allow the dual use, which has been done in multiple different locations along the Daniel Webster Highway, per Section 2.02.3. And just quickly going through the criteria, it must not be contrary to the public interest because, I would say granting a dual-use variance will not be contrary to public interest. More specifically, the requested variance will not unduly conflict with the basic purpose of the relevant zone and provisions, as it will neither alter the essential character nor threaten public health, safety, or welfare. As I've been saying, this has been existing for some time now. The existing neighborhood remain largely unaffected by granting the dual-use variance on the subject property. This property has operated for many years, if not decades, as a residence, and a dual-use property without the proper permits, unbeknownst to us on that. As such, the current owners have been told that they are in violation of operating dual-use property without the proper permits, and we are here tonight to clean that up. As such, with the length of time this property is operated as dual-use property, the applicant believes this variance would not be contrary to the public interest. That's number one.
Alright, any questions from the Board? Please continue.
Number two, it must be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. As this Board has seen over the last few years, having a dual-use property with the owner living on-site has been consistent with the spirits of the ordinance along DW Highway. Also, the applicant believes the spirit of the ordinance is to ensure like neighborhoods and compatible uses near each other. In this case, they've been operating constantly with each others for years, and we feel this variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
Alright, any questions from the Board? Alright, please continue.
Number three, it must result in substantial justice being done. Obviously, substantial justice would be done by allowing this applicant, who bought the property at the time, with a tax map that said it was a dual-use, and it wasn't. Substantial justice would be done to allow them to continue to operate on-site as a dual-use.
I'd say please continue.
It must not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Surrounding properties are all commercial, and by allowing due to this on the property, which has existed for years and not affected values in the area, we would add that the granting this variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding area.
Any questions?
Just, let me just try to get something out. Actually, no, I'm almost, never mind, I apologize. I just was.
Number five, there is no substantial relation between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific violation being applied to this property. As the Board knows, there are two ways determining unnecessary hardship, the existing of special conditions or circumstances distinguish from the subject property from others. The applicant has outlined the special conditions hardship. As stated throughout my presentation, the owners currently live on the site, and the denial of variance would require them to find other housing at a time when housing is very hard to find at unreasonable prices, and denial would not have any substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific dual-use violation that we are asking for. And secondly, the purpose is a reasonable one. Again, a property that has been used on DW Highway as a dual-use for as long as it has, residential with the commercial, we fear is a very reasonable use in this area. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the Board at all regarding this petition?
Just on number five, you know, as far as establishing special conditions of the property, can you go over that one more time for me? Or did I, I just want to make sure that I understood when you're looking at the special conditions.
So this site here, with it being located in the district surrounded by the commercial properties, it has been, being currently utilized for a dual-use for decades at this point here, I feel that the general purpose of the ordinance, specific to not allowing that in an area which has it already in that area there, would create the hardship for our property.
But there's no other dual-use in the area, other than, my understanding, right?
Ah, there's dual uses all up and down DW Highway.
Other, okay.
We actually approved this for Tortilla Flat up the road.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Elite Heating was another one.
Yep, yep. Then I do remember both of those, and that's kind of what I was trying to, I guess, understand from the special purpose.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Alright, I will go ahead and open this up to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this particular petition? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this petition? Alright, I will close.
Before the hearing is closed, I just want to add one clarifying point. While not germane to what's in front of you, the applicant, if this variance is granted, will have to go to the planning board to seek approval for an addition that they are going to be constructing on the property. That addition will comply with everything in the zoning ordinance should this variance be granted, so there's really nothing that concerns you with that portion of this whole project that they've got going, but I do want to say that if the Board is going to issue a variance in this case, please condition it on a planning board approval.
Fair enough. Okay, that's the same as, alright. So with that being said, I know one of the things we had discussed was deliberating the five points individually before making a motion. Does anyone have any opinions one way or the other regarding any of the five criteria?
I don't. And to, during his point, sorry. He's right, I mean, I, we sat on the, I sat on the Tortilla, I mean, Daniel Webster Highway is on a couple of these locations, and I know I've sat and approved two of them myself, and, you know, just thank you for reminding me, but I didn't see any conflict in any of the criteria, from my standpoint.
I would, I would agree with that.
I think the criteria that Matt articulated on is sufficient to prove the case.
Any other thoughts, Ben or Chuck?
It's only just.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Deborah Adam, Adamanschuck?
Adamanschuck.
Adamanschuck. Petitioner-owner, variance under Section 2.02.3 of the zoning ordinance to permit a mixed-use residential and bakery in the C2 General Commercial District. Parcel is located at 4 Mound Court in the C2 General Commercial, Aquifer Conservation, and Elderly Housing, Overly Districts Tax Map 4D-4, Lot 2, Case Number ZBA 2022-15, with site plan approval from the planning board.
Seconded.
Alright, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Ben. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So 5-0-0. I know we say this all the time, but there's a 30-day window where somebody could appeal this if they wanted to. Other than that, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Alright, so the next petition that we will be hearing is number eight. Lana Martin, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of an in-ground pool six feet from the side property line, whereas 12 feet is required. The parcel is located at 21 Cassie Lane in the R4 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4C, Lot 47-5, Case ZBA 2022-18.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello.
How are you?
Okay.
I'm Lana Martin. I'm the petitioner and--
Is your microphone on? Yep, it is, okay.
Keep it closer.
Keep it closer. Alright, I'm the petitioner and owner at 21 Cassie Lane for the installation of an in-ground pool with a variance of six feet against the requirement of 12. Do you want me to just go ahead and read through the criteria? Would you like any other background first?
I apologize, I'm trying to sort through all my paperwork since I did these all out of order. And actually, nope, we can hop right into the--
Hop right in? Alright. So we're requesting a variance from Section 3.02 in order to permit the installation of an in-ground pool. The water's edge is likely going to be six to eight feet from our property line, which doesn't meet the setback requirement of 12 feet. And so we're going to do our best to limit the variance that we need, but given the space and the hardscape in the area, that's why we're asking for the request.
Any questions from the Board? Please continue.
Okay. We don't believe that granting the variance is going to be contrary to public interest because the pool will be on our property and fully enclosed with a fence, so three of the four sides of the fence is currently planned to be the white privacy fencing. Therefore, you won't really see it, quite frankly, and it won't be contrary to the public interest.
Questions? Okay, sorry, it looked like you were going to ask something, Patrick. Please continue.
Okay. And the spirit of the ordinance is observed. The spirit is to provide reasonable yard setbacks to abutting properties. We believe we're going to meet the spirit of the ordinance, because we still will have sufficient space between the water's edge of the property, the water's edge and the property line, and again, we're going to try to minimize the variance while also ensuring we don't disrupt the current landscape. And we've had many conversations with our neighbors on this topic.
Okay. Alright, please continue.
Okay. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because we have an existing hardscape that we do not want to disturb. It will allow us to install the pool on our property without causing damage to the current patio.
Alright, any questions from the Board?
I, yeah, yeah, that's a question.
Go ahead.
Okay.
What kind of a buffer do you have between the property lines? Is there any shrubbery or, is there anything there that--
Between us and the direct neighbor where the pool will go, there will be the white privacy fence. There is not, at the moment, we took the current one down to fix it. One will go back up, and so that will be the primary buffer between us and them.
Okay, but there's no shrubbery or--
Not on that side, no.
So which side of the house is it going on, I guess? Because I'm looking at an aerial view, and I see the hardscape here. Is it going on this side?
To the left.
To this side?
Yes. So what's there, you see garden beds?
Yes.
Which have all been removed.
Okay.
Yep.
Rectangular kidney shape?
Kidney-ish shape.
Kidney-ish shape.
Yep, to sort of follow the line of the patio, yes.
And what, I'm just curious, why that particular side, not the other side?
The other side also kind of has, it's kind of a hill and kind of where the, we come up the driveway into that side, so it just felt like it, I'm going to use Feng Shui.
Yeah.
It really just made a lot more sense on that side, and quite frankly, I think we would still be in this scenario even if we were on the other side, because there's not a ton of room. I mean, the property is not large on either side.
Okay. Alright, yeah, my question's answered.
Alright, so we're on to unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship. Number five?
Yes.
Okay, so I answered the special conditions part of this, and so the neighborhood is in a cluster development, which limits the amount of room that we have to work with as it relates to the in-ground pool installation. Additionally, we have the extensive hardscape already in the backyard that prevents us from easily installing a pool in the way that would, that wouldn't require the variance and not disrupt the existing patio.
I think unnecessary hardship is met. Alright, are there any questions for the Board before we open this to the public? Alright, so what I'll go ahead and do is open this up to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? Alright.
Before you close, I noticed on the, on the, you have a pool house.
On the picture that I drew?
On this one, yeah.
Yes, that is, eventually will be installed, yes. It's not there at the moment.
Is that a shed, or?
It will be a pool house from Ridge Ferry.
Okay.
It's not there yet.
Okay, it just, because it looks like you're about five feet from each side.
Yes, and I believe that meets the setback requirement, at least as I discussed with the community.
Yeah, just to add clarification to that, this is a cluster development, so five feet for regular building step-- for regular building setbacks, pools for some reason are unfortunately a further distance away of the odd number of 12.
Good note.
So everything else would be fine.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, that's what I thought we were told, so--
Just--
Yeah, no, it's a great question, I've learned a lot as well, so--
Yeah, all right, thank you. I don't have anything else, thank you very much.
Well, we've already opened the public, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing, and are there any thoughts one way or the other on any--
Have you talked to your neighbors about this?
Absolutely.
Both sides? They're fine with it. Okay.
They're fine with it because they're going to come over and join in the pool.
Exactly. Actually, one of them has a pool, and the other one really wants to come over, so I think, no, we, we've had many conversations with our neighbors. We have a great relationship, and I don't want to ruin it over this, so, yeah.
As it should be.
Yeah.
So do we have any questions or comments regarding any of the five points of law for the variance?
I think she did a good job of--
I agree.
--introducing them.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Lana Martin, petitioner, owners, a variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the installation of an in-ground pool six feet from the side property line, whereas 12 feet is required. Parcel is located at 21 Cass, Cassie Lane in R4 residential by soils, aquifer conservation districts tax map 4C lot 47 dash five, case number ZBA 2022 dash 18.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 5-0-0. And I think, because we, you were also here for the garage, correct?
Nope, just this.
Oh, okay. So just so you know, there is a 30-day window where somebody could appeal this.
No worries, thank you, I heard, heard you a while ago, so--
Yeah, I try to tell everybody that, just in case--
Just in case we weren't listening.
Well, that and--
It's always a good reminder.
Yeah, that's fair.
You never know who's going to appeal these things.
Yeah.
It's rare, it happens, but it's rare.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wonderful, have a great night.
You too, good luck with the pool.
Thank you.
All right.
That one, just read it. Just take it and read it.
I actually don't even have it in front of me.
Just read that one.
Do we need to recess?
Yeah, just, just--
I now have so much paperwork in front of me, I don't know which end is up anymore.
You need a secretary.
I, yeah. So, petition, Mark Giorgini, variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a deck eight feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. Okay, so parcels located at 99 Front Street in the R4 residential by soils, aquifer conservation, elderly housing, overlay districts, and wellhead protection area, tax map 6E dash one, lot six, ZBA case 2022 dash 19.
Oh, yeah.
Good, how are you?
Good. Say my name again and all that?
Yes, please.
Good. Mark Giorgini, petitioner, owner, looking for a variance under section 3.05 to permit the construction of a deck eight feet from the property line, where 15 feet is required.
Okay, all right. Can I just go ahead and look through the criteria?
Sure.
If you could just stop at the end of each one, in case we have questions.
Okay. The variance is not contrary to the public interest, simply for the fact that it's replacing a deck that was already existent, that already had a building permit and the town already approved of, so--
When did the town approve it?
1986. Actually, there was a building permit, but it wasn't varianced, so, I don't know if the whole backstory, as I understand it, all happened before I bought the house, but there was a variance for the garage, that's now a bedroom, which was, I think, 11 feet, it says, or something, and, so they, there was a variance for that, and then a building permit to build the deck directly behind it, but it was never, they never got the variance for that, so--
Okay, okay. All right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and continue number two.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed. It doesn't, there's, it doesn't encroach on my neighbor's, it doesn't encroach visually or functionally on my neighbor's property, and also, there's a line of shrubs that hide most of the deck from my neighbor.
And you put here, it's, it's replacing the same footprint as the--
Almost the exact same footprint, on the, the neighbor's side, it's the same, it's an L shape, I'm just making it a square, you know, further into my property.
Okay, so as far as the, as far as the setbacks, it's the same?
Exact same.
Okay. All right, number three?
Substantial justice is done. I'm just trying to put a deck back where there was a deck already, and my house is designed in such a way that there's a slider out that side of the house, and the property is a, a slope, a serious slope on the other side, and I would have to build three or four times the amount of deck for the functionality of it, the way the yard is set up.
And, you want to move on to the next bullet?
Sure. Values of surrounding properties are not diminished. I took down a rotting away terrible deck, and I'm going to put up a shiny, brand-new one, so--
That's probably the best way you could put that.
As long as you can get the materials.
Well, that's another story, I had to take a second job for the material costs, but that's another story.
Absolutely, and the unnecessary hardship?
Unnecessary hardship, just, just that, that the property is designed so that the deck was there, it's been there since 1986, everything kind of flows and functions with the deck being there versus somewhere else, and the, just, the cost alone to try and, you know, redesign part of the house and the deck also is, is cost prohibitive.
Definitely understood. All right, so, do we have any further questions about this deck? All right, I'll go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this particular petition? Anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, I'll close the hearing for deliberation. Any thoughts on the five criteria from the board?
I think it all makes sense.
Absolutely, agreed. Do I hear a motion?
Also--
Chuck?
I'd just like to make a comment, if I could.
Sure.
Although this gentleman is probably unaware, given the character of his neighborhood, he actually lives on the oldest road in Merrimack--
Interesting.
--which was laid out in 1733.
There's a little piece of trivia for you.
And, characteristically, when the English laid out a town on a river, or in this case, a land grant, an arrogant sit, number five land grant, they had two roads, one behind the lots that faced the river, and then the one behind the lots that didn't face the river. So the, the first road was always, always called the front road, that's how it got its name, Front Street, and the second one would of course be the back-from-the-river road, which is, of course, Back River Road. Now, again, sit number five, a little bit of history.
That's a good one, thank you.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a deck eight feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. Parcel is located at 99 Front Street in the R4 residential by soils, aquifer conservation and elderly housing overlay districts, and wellhead protection area, tax map 6E hyphen one, lot six, and it's ZBA case number 2022 hyphen 19.
Second.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, motion passes, 5-0-0. You still have that 30-day window, I don't think anyone's going to appeal the deck.
I just talked to my neighbors yesterday, and their, their only question was, I don't have to go, do I?
I don't think so.
So, does that mean I have to wait 30 days before I can build it, is that--
So technically, it means that if you build within the first 30 days, you're doing so at your own risk.
Because somebody could come back.
Gotcha. I'll roll that dice.
All right. I, I, yeah, I can't tell you what the odds are that that would even happen, but, just so you know.
Thank you.
And good luck. All right, and agenda item number 10. Michael and Shauna Starr, petitioners, 598 DW Highway LLC, owners, variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a multifamily residential density of one unit per 4,372 square feet, whereas 40,000 square feet per unit is required. Six units, whereas zero units are permitted in this, a multifamily residence on a lot with a depth of 125 feet, whereas 200 feet is required, a front setback of 30 feet, whereas 50 feet is required, along DW Highway and northerly and southerly, southerly side setback of 40 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 598 DW Highway in the C1 limited commercial and aquifer conservation, elderly housing overlay districts in the wellhead protection area, case ZBA 2022 dash 20.
Good evening, Matt Ruth here with TF Moran.
Okay.
We're here before you with this application for numerous relief on the subject parcel. I can go through each one, it appears that's, that's the flavor of the board.
Absolutely, please, that way if we have any questions, we can, we can interject in one of these.
All right, so, we're seeking a variance from section 3.02 table of lot and yard regulations for C1 and C2 limited general commercial district to allow residential density of six units, whereas zero units are allowed. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the area and neighborhood consists of a mix of non-residential and residential uses, there are restaurants, single-family homes, two-family homes, three-family homes, gas station, convenience store with residential above, and assisted living facility within close proximity. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public's interest because the use is a reasonable, reasonable one, which would complement the adjacent uses and benefit the neighborhood businesses. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is to attract development where water and sewer are available, specifically multifamily residential. This particular lot was granted a special exception for residential use under the zoning ordinance in 2021. The size and scale of the development as proposed will maintain substantial separation from adjacent uses and maintain the Main Street appeal.
If we could just pause for a moment?
Sure.
Because I, I do have questions, does anyone else on the board have questions at this point? Chuck, you want to go first?
I might well occupy the next half hour with questions about the proposal as expressed thus far. In any event, I would begin by saying that I don't believe that there is another configuration of a building on a half-acre lot of this nature anywhere in the Reed's Ferry area. This building's 115 feet long and 30 feet deep on a half-acre lot, and as the applicant has expressed, it is fraught with zoning regulations that he is begging relief from. These are not onerous.
It, it looks like Robert wants to interject.
Just before we go much farther, I do want to raise the board's attention and also to Mr. Mowers, that when a similar proposal came forward on this lot last year for six, excuse me, eight residential units, Mr. Mower, before he joined the board, did speak out adamantly opposed to that present, that petition, so I believe, and it is staff's opinion, that Mr. Mower may need to recuse himself from this ca, participation in this case, and then he can go into the audience and, and speak all he wants to. However, I do need to stress that is, that decision to recuse is up to Mr. Mower alone. But I do need to state it for the record.
Okay, so, I guess with that being said, it, do you feel that you need to recuse yourself from this?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm a sworn public official. This is an appeal before the zoning board that has not come before this board before. If it had, this would be double jeopardy. So this is a brand-new appeal, it's a brand-new opportunity, I get to exercise, exercise my responsibility as a public official, and I will assure you that the integrity that I possess relative to not only my own character and principle, but in regards to my lengthy public service in the town of Merrimack, compels me to be fair, and therefore, I am testifying fairly that there is not another building with this configuration anywhere in Reed's Ferry. And for anybody's information, Reed's Ferry exists from Babu'sik Brook to the Bedford Town Line. This building is three stories high, and it occupies a principal portion of a, of a half-acre lot. It is a far departure from anything that we would recognize in our community, unless, of course, you put a giant steeple on top of it, and it looks somewhat like a church. But in fact, the elevations that were presented to me remind me a great deal more of the old White Mill that was torn down to make Watson Park. It is, it is not an attractive proposal that would add in any way, shape, or form to the architectural character of our neighborhood, regardless of what transition they may feel is taking place between commercial and residential. It is simply not fit for the neighborhood.
Okay.
And, yes, I am not going to recuse myself, to make that very clear.
Okay, understood, that is your decision to make. Actually, my, my only question was, just out of curiosity, why six units?
I have an answer for that.
Can you come to a microphone and just identify yourself, please?
My name's Mike Starr, and the construction cost these days is insane. The taxes, in order to, to construction and to survive, any property put there would have to be able to absorb the cost, and the only building that I can, number-wise, was a six-unit building to absorb that. Anything less couldn't. Small businesses, whatever, would not survive there because the cost of construction, the taxes, and so on and so forth, would not be able to survive that, that property. And that's what we came up with, and went through it quite a few times, and tried to go less in thought, and numbers were, weren't there. I mean, they just weren't there. For the cost of construction and, and to survive, no, no small business could build something new there and survive, as I see. And I feel bad for the owner, he can't find, because he's dealing with, like, all the above around us, to try to sell it, to make his own profit for it, because nothing really could be there for the cost of what could absorb and survive there. And survival of life, and everything's changed in the last five years, never mind 10 years, property's worth, what they're going for, the cost of everything going up, I mean, it's ridiculous for what we see today, so, that's how I looked at it. I, I, I appease the thought of all the neighbors, and luckily, at that point, if they look at the taxation of, of their properties, or, or what the worth of their property is, like my house, went up quite a bit in the last couple of years, so, I know my property, I could sell way more than what I bought it for, so no one's going to lose the worth of their properties of what they have now, because just the economy is the way it is now. So I'm not, and if you try to sell your house, there'll probably be a bid war, you know, people would make money. So it's not like, the thought, I'm not trying to, like, take a damper on the, the area, I think the worth of the area would do very well, no matter what. I think all the neighboring businesses would extremely do well, and look forward to seeing that business there. And, and I, I heard that, the thought of the, the size of the building, the only thing I could say for the size of the building is I would talk to the engineer to bring it to a split level, bring it down lower, so it wouldn't be so tall, so it wouldn't be, look so, as big as it looks. The decorative, the landscape, I'd open it to the public, what they thought, or coming with a great idea to, to appease the neighborhood, to make them feel that wonderful as well. So I'm, I'm not looking to bash the neighborhood, I'm looking to give something to the neighbor, to, I think the environment and, and as far as the, the public businesses would enjoy the thought of that building there, so--
What would the, what would the square footage of these units be?
I have to look at the print off, so, they're two-bedroom units, they're not that big, they're actually--
I think they're around little, little over 800.
800 square feet, they're not that, I mean, it's just, the layout's longer and bigger because the, the size that we have to go with to fit in our place, to put the parking there. That was the only reason why it's so long and looks like it-- That was the only reason why it's so long and looks like it does is because, but again, I could drop it down, but there's enough parking in the back for the particular building.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions from the board? All right. You have another question, Chuck?
It's not a question, it's a statement. I don't believe that the town of Merrimack, through its power given to the zoning board of adjustment, should be in the business of contorting a number of different variances to shoehorn an inappropriate project onto a small lot simply because somebody has made a bad business deal.
All right.
That is, that is not the fault of the town of Merrimack. And I don't believe that we are under any obligation whatsoever to try and make this work for a developer that has struggled, as the probative testimony has said, to find a, an answer to their problem. Their problem is not the problem of the town of Merrimack.
Can, can we save that for deliberation, though? I, I really want to get through the, the five questions.
I'm more than happy if the board wants to deliberate that.
Okay. So the third question. Granting the variance would do substantial justice.
Granting the variance will allow the development of a lot which otherwise has been vacant. The use is consistent with the neighborhood and its combination of residential and non-residential uses. The proposed residential use is a reasonable one that will maintain the character of the neighborhood and maintain adequate separation to adjacent uses. You want me to move on to number four?
I guess I'm confused. The, the use is consistent with the neighborhood. Are there other buildings with high density housing in the neighborhood?
If you further down as I go through, I guess I'll say that, you know, there are three families and two families which are on rather small lots as well, obviously pre-existing, and that density would exceed or be similar in nature to what we are proposing.
Oh, okay. All right. Any questions for number three? Do you have a question, Chuck?
No, again, it's not really a question, but I would beg to differ, being a lifelong native of the village of Reed's Ferry and familiar with all of the properties along through there. There are no properties that are similar to the project that is under a question here for variance.
Number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because?
Granted the variance will not diminish the values of surrounding property because the lot currently remains vacant. The proposed use will not generate the noise, traffic, or other nuisances that might be associated with some commercial uses. Proposed development will maintain the character of the neighborhood and will complement the mix of architectural styles of the neighborhood while maintaining adequate separation between abutting uses.
All right, and we'll just go right on to unnecessary hardship.
Owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in that area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision of the property. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the purpose of this ordinance provisions and the specific application to the subject property because the provisions of this section of the ordinance is to maintain residential and non-residential uses at a comparable scale where the public may not necessarily be able to differentiate between a commercial use and a residential use. The lot's size, along with the availability, availability of public water, sewer, and gas lends itself to the development of multifamily residential at a smaller scale, similar to the buildings in the neighborhood. The lot's location to services such as dining, convenience stores, gas stations, and smaller retail pharmacy uses complement the use and its proposed construction on the lot.
All right. Oh, please continue.
The proposed use is a reasonable one as ordinance specifically calls out that the limited commercial zone contains a mix of residential and non-residential uses. The lot is also serviced by public water and sewer, which is a requirement for multifamily development. Since this lot was granted a special exception for residential use, the zoning board previously felt that a residential use would not have a negative impact on the abutting uses. The size and scale of proposed multifamily development is not out of character with the existing uses in the area. Proposed development will maintain almost fifty percent of the lot as open space yard while maintaining substantial separation between abutting uses and property lots.
Any questions about unnecessary hardship from the board? In that case, I will open this up to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this petition? Okay, so one by one, if you could, come up to the, the standing microphone and just state your name, your address, and.
My name is Jessica Dunley. I live at Seven Wheeler Street, which is the property behind this, this property. I have a few reasons why I feel like this would cause some troubles for me, my neighbors in the area around. One of the main things that I really worry about is the traffic in the area, the intersection that this property sits on, there's high volume of traffic especially during rush hour times, and then having all these extra cars, all these extra units with people coming in and out during these times, it's, it's really scary and I, a lot of people get into accidents there all the time. I hear it from my house and I just, I worry about the traffic and the safety of the community with this building here with all of these apartments. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. This isn't something that I normally do. Another thing that I worry about is the landscape in the area with the trees. There's a lot of trees that are, there are a lot of trees that are on my property that do kind of hang over that property that they would need to cut and, and adjust to, to fit this building. And I really worry about like the, the landscape and, and everything that we value in our home just being adjusted to fit this building. Another thing that I worry about is my privacy. I'm a young adult looking to grow a family in my one floor ranch and then having a building towering over my house, like such a large building, really affects my privacy with all of these extra people. I would now have people on every side of me, all four sides, and it's just, I'm really worried about that and the privacy for my house. And then the last thing is just the variances that they're requesting. It says one unit per forty thousand square feet is required. They're looking to put a building that's ten percent of that per unit for forty-three hundred square feet. That's a big variance, not to mention the variance they need on all of the sides and the depth of the building is almost double. It's, it's squishing a big building on a small lot, and I think it's really affecting all of the neighbors who are concerned, and it, it really could affect the value of my property. Yes, properties are always going to go up, but if my property value is going up, but it's also coming down from this building, it's, it's a big concern for me. So those are the reasons that I have.
So quick question. If you, and you brought up the, you know, having a three story building kind of overshadowed on your house, if it was a single family home there, would you have a prob, I mean, you'd slap people on the other side of you.
No, and I would, not at all. I would love for something to be built there. I would love to have either a business, a single fam- family home, even a duplex, but this is massive, like this is really big, and I think that this affects like, like someone looking down into my bedroom window or my bathroom window. It's, it's a concern.
Okay. That's my question.
My name is Justin Dunley. I live at Seven Wheeler with my wife, Jessica. Right at the beginning, you, you asked why, why they chose the number six. And the two things that stuck up to me were the numbers weren't there and they need to make a profit. These folks aren't even from Merrimack. They live in the town of Bedford. They're looking to make a quick profit here. One of my biggest concerns is the noise and the privacy. Like my wife said, you know, if this variance does get passed, construction would have to start. There's about eight trees that are over thirty years old. All of those would have to come down. Now, the sun is going to be pouring on our house. We're going to lose all our privacy, all of our shade. Again, if this does go up, it will devalue our property. With the intersection, right where Charlie's and Reed's Ferry Market is, it's a little corner there, that's a dangerous intersection. If they were to put a building there, they're going to be pulling out onto that, and he wants to build an elderly housing, so you're going to have elderly people pulling out on the DW. That's a recipe for disaster right there with accidents. And like my wife said, there's simply not enough room. The, the numbers don't align. And we're just, we're hoping you take everything into consideration. We have numerous people here that all live around this property, and we're all just really against it. And the last thing was, I, I took a look at these, these blueprints. They don't care so much as they want to put the dumpster right up against our property line. So now I'm going to have a dumpster on my property line? I mean, this is just, this is crazy. I, I can't even believe this is up for debate. So, thank you.
Okay.
I have more of a question. Phil Roy, Chapel Lane. If the variance were to be approved, now me as a property owner in that area, can I put up an eight story building? Because I have a bigger piece of property than they have?
Sure.
Is that how it would work?
You'd have to be sitting here to do it, but why not?
I mean, is it just perpetuate? Can we just keep building and building these large buildings on small, tiny properties? I'm just curious.
I would say you're, you're, the best way to answer that question is to speak with the community development office.
Okay.
Why stop at eight, go to ten? Yeah.
Hi, my name is Mercedes Fleming-Roy. I've lived on Chapel Lane, which is one of the side streets. It actually runs into Wheeler.
Intersex.
Intersex, yeah, thanks. So I've been here for thirty-five years. I am very concerned, the nature of the community, small buildings. I think it's a charming little neighborhood, and the scale that's being proposed by this building is completely inappropriate to the neighborhood. So in terms of trying to, I think that a lot has been done to make Merrimack a finer community, just progressively nicer. And this, throwing this building, packing this building into the charming little Reed's Ferry would disrupt everything. And I'm sorry for the folks who abut it, but even my property, which is a stone's throw away on Chapel Lane, I think it would have a, a very negative effect. I have to think about safety as well. They had mentioned it, but that road is very busy. There are many accidents, and it's probably in the busiest part of that road or one of the busiest parts of that road. So increasing the traffic and the coming and going right there where there's already a lot, I do think it's a safety concern for that area. Anyway, I, I can't say I support it in any way. I don't see how it is helpful to the town with all the building that's going on in the town. The town does not need this, in my opinion. I do not see any benefit to the area. Thank you.
My name's Dave British. I live at Five Wheeler Street. My, me and my wife and my son have lived there for nineteen years. We abutted the property, the proposed property, and I do have a lot of concerns with this property. I won't go through the statutes because I think you guys are really familiar with them and you know where your bounds exist, but I really do feel there are some concerns and issues that, that I need to bring up, and it's something you may have heard before, but I think you can't hear it enough. I do think the value of my property, because the values of surrounding properties are diminished with a, a building such as this. There's many ways that that would impact our property. It, it comes about thirty feet from our backyard. Our backyard has about twenty mature maple trees that are about forty feet tall. So first and foremost, they're going to end up taking out, as you've probably already heard from some other folks, they're going to end up taking out a good portion of those trees, if not almost all of them. That is our shade. It will impact the enjoyment of my property currently. I won't be able to enjoy my backyard the way I do today. Again, nineteen years, and it'll impact the future value of my property. If I want to put a pool in my backyard, I can meet every variance. And that's really the intent of the law, right? To meet the law. It's not to ask for a million variances because it doesn't meet your needs. I can meet those needs, but if this property's built, I wouldn't be able to put a pool on. I can't, I can't manage that with the property that they're proposing. It's, it is ridiculous. We have a dumpster that they're proposing right on the property line. Other things that I have concerns with is I don't think it's reasonable. Again, we talked, we've heard a lot of talk about what's reasonable, what's not reasonable. There was a property built in my neighborhood recently within the past five years. It's a small, single family home, perfect. It's perfectly reasonable, it fits with the neighborhoods, it's acceptable, right? This doesn't fit with the neighborhood. The folks who are planning on building this don't live in the neighborhood, okay? And I don't think it meets that definition whatsoever. Other concerns that I have is privacy concerns. Again, I don't, I, I heard people talking about it being consistent with the neighborhood. It's not. I'm sorry. I disagree wholeheartedly. There's no comparable scale, as we've also heard tonight. Again, my future enjoyment would be harmed. The parking area is about thirty feet from my property line. That's right on the backside of this property. So I'm going to experience, and my neighbors will experience additional noise. Again, you're talking six families. I have one family, we have three cars. I have a garage that I put two of them in, but if they put this in, we've got to experience noise, odor, problems such as that, right? I, I have issues with that. Trash, that can bring pests, all kinds of problems. I don't need it. And I also wonder, what about pets, right? Everybody has dogs. These folks have a cute little dog that they walk around the neighborhood with. You have six more families? How many pets are they going to have? Where are they going to go? They're going to end up in my backyard? I, I have nothing against pets. They're wonderful, but you need room for them. This doesn't meet any of the standards. I vehemently agree with, disagree with this. Thank you.
What I'll go ahead and do is close the public portion of the hearing. All right, before I go ahead and do that, was there anyone else that was looking to speak regarding this petition? I'll have you address them after. I just want to make sure I get the public piece out of the way. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. So some of the concerns that were brought up were removal of trees, dumpster placement, privacy, I, I guess, traffic. Although that really, it's not much of a zoning issue.
It is. Traffic is become a zoning issue.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what, what my thoughts are, if someone's, first of all, pets aren't allowed in the building, there's no decks. I'm putting blinds in the glass so there's privacy. I'm putting a fence all the way around. As far as trees coming down, I, I love trees, I'm not going to take them down if, if.
I have a question.
Excuse me?
You, you said you were going to put a fence around?
Yes. White privacy fence all around the property, property line, so everybody has their privacy.
Up against, up against the, where the trees are now?
Wherever the property line is, I'm going to put a fence up. And as far as trees are concerned, I'm not going to take them down for, for the use of my own use. I'll trim what needs to be trimmed, and that's it. The trees can stay up. I, I don't need to take trees down and put the building, the building's in the middle. The parking lot, there is space around the parking lot where the trees can stay. And as far as the dumpster, there'll be a space for it, and containing your trash is not going to let animals and stuff into it. Someone will come in, a truck will come in, pick it up and, and dump it out. So I don't see, they're not going to see the dumpster, there'll be privacy with the fence, I'm not going to be taking the trees down, just what's need to be. And as far as what I see the community is, people are going to be walking to the restaurant, walking to the store, walking to, to wherever the diner next door. They're not going to be driving in all these places. I think when people are working out of their home, like most of the people are too, they're not going to be driving as much as you think they may be. Yes, of course, people go out, maybe drive to Shaws because it's got grocery. Yes, of course, people go out, maybe drive to Shaw's because it's got groceries or some errands they do, but it's not gonna be as busy as the thought may be, because you have so much right there for the environment, for all the people. All the people can walk, they'll be, go across the street for a restaurant, or go to the store, or go get breakfast next door. It's all right there. There's walking distance. So, I, kinda my thought is, it's not gonna be so busy as that. And again, with a privacy fence up to get their privacy, and I'm not gonna take all the trees down. I'm not gonna, I wanna, I wanna help keep friends and not make enemies. Whatever suggestions can be made, I'll work with the neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not looking to scare everybody off and, like, I'm just gonna strip the thing and just throw it up and say, "See you later." And that's how I feel about it, and that's my plan.
Okay. I apologize, I've already closed the public.
I can add some, I guess, some more to that. You know, based, based on the proposed use, being a resident, residential, in regards to the current traffic flow on that road, the residential use is actually gonna generate a lot less traffic than what potentially could be there. I'd also add that, you know, the proposed building height that we're proposing is within the rights of the zoning. And as the neighbor had discussed about forty-foot trees, we're looking at a thirty-six-foot tall to the top. As far as elevation of the building, so obviously with forty-foot trees, you're not seeing anything into the abutting properties, obviously, for the most part, until fall. So, I would argue that, you know, that's, the scale of the building, of the size of the building in comparison to the trees is, is almost a moot point. And I would also say that because of the way the, the whole site is laid out, the parking lot and the fact that that lot is pretty flat is gonna mitigate the need to cut many trees, if at all, to get that building in there and/or the parking.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
How tall is your fence?
It's tall as they'll let me put one up. I mean, what, I don't know what the zoning is, but I'll put one ten feet up if they let me put one ten feet up. Whatever, whatever they ask me to, highest I can put in for privacy. I agree with privacy. I, my first thought, and when I went to the neighbors, when I did the other day, the first thing I said, we're gonna put a privacy fence all the way around. So, you'll have your privacy. We're putting blinds in the windows, so it's not like nobody goes in there with blinds. They don't put them up yet. They'll be in the glass, so the blinds will already be there. So, and no decks will be put on the building, so no one's hanging out back. So, they're not gonna see the cars, 'cause the fence is gonna be that tall, and nobody's gonna be looking from the ground. And with all the blinds, you're not gonna be able to see people in or them looking out. So, I'm looking to appease the neighborhood. I don't wanna go in there and say, "Hey, too bad," you know? I wanna go in and say, "Look, I'm building something nice for the community." That drawing you see is not the drawing I had. I had brick and glass, and it was different. But to put it on a drawing that I could get from the architect, just to give me something to work with, that's what it looked like. And again, I was gonna put it, my thought was putting it into like a split entry, where the first floor would be steps down into the apartment, and then be steps up to the first, and then your third, so the building would not be as tall as well. I was thinking brick and glass in a totally different building that is in the neighborhood, but when I went to the building department, they like to see it appeased to the neighborhood. Well, I'd be open for suggestions. What do you want the exterior to look like? I can bring it lower. I can cut it up. I can do some shake. I can do, I mean, I'm a builder, and that's what I do. I can make anything happen. And all I have to do is talk to the architect, make a few moves, and then it's an appeasing building, and we'll landscape it out, so it looks just like we want it to seem, is what my thought was. I wanted to put a tank under the ground for the sprinkler system, so you're not taking water away from the town. So, when the rain comes off the roof, it goes into a tank, and that's gonna use for the sprinkler system, so you don't have to, you know, waste water. You know what I mean? I was thinking positive for the fact of what we were doing. I wasn't thinking negative.
Any further questions from the board?
Comments?
Is a, is a comment that you wanna make back and forth, or are you ready to close and have a deliberation?
Deliberation.
Deliberation.
All right. So, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna close the session, and we will deliberate. I guess, who wants to go first?
I can start.
Mr. Chairman, on the board.
Yes, Chuck.
In all fairness, we've heard a completely different intent and a completely different proposal than the one that has been submitted. So, I think in all fairness, if he'd like to withdraw his proposal and come back with all of the wondrous architecture and landscaping and privacy measures and all of those things that he actually intended to come with tonight.
That would not impact our decision, though. Our decision is based on specifically the variances that are mentioned. It has nothing to do with the look, the landscape, or any of that. So, technically...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The point that I was attempting to make was, in fact, that the variances go with the land and have nothing to do with any of the issues that would come before the planning board, were we to grant a variance for this.
Correct. Lynn?
I could, I'm looking at the criteria, and there are a couple of things that stand out to me. Under the spirit of the ordinance, and this is mentioned a couple of times, maintain substantial separation from adjacent uses. The variances that are being requested are not that. They're asking for a variance because they can't do substantial separation from the adjacent properties. On the granting the variance, again, separate, adequate separation, it, it just, it's not there. The consistent with the neighborhood, yeah, rental properties, there are some rental properties there, but a six-unit building is not consistent with the neighborhood. It's been mentioned, there are other two families and three families in there, but there are no other six-family units. Character of the neighborhood, this is substantially different from what the character is. Comparable scale, similar to buildings in the neighborhood, none of that is true. Size and scale of the proposed multi is not out of character. It certainly is out of character. I understand the petitioner's comments about cost of building and putting up something that would be feasible from a business point of view. I can understand that. I know I'm involved with that. I understand what the, the labor costs, the materials costs, this substantial right now, so I can understand that. But that doesn't mean we should put something of this scale into that neighborhood.
I would agree. My, my big concern is, there are definitely buildings like this in Merrimack that are in areas that are much more appropriate for them. I think this particular building at that location is very out of character. And I, I can't tell you that I think that property values are gonna go up if I have a property with a big fence butted up against it. So, I have concerns with the diminishing of value surrounding properties for that reason and the substantial justice. Not because I think it's a bad building or a bad design. I think it's a bad location for that building and that design. So... Any other thoughts from the board?
I agree with what you and Lynn have just said. I had it in my notes. Plus, cost of construction is not a basis or justification for a density that's being proposed on that site, period. Has no bearing. That's not what zoning is about.
That's true. However, I would say that I think that's a good way of looking at building a building like this. Just I think the location of where this building is going is not appropriate.
That's the issue, the site.
Yeah. So, do I hear a motion? Oh, sorry, Chuck.
As a matter of doing business with the zoning board, I can't overemphasize how ineffective it is to bray the horribles in order to receive what they believe is some acceptance of a bad proposal. So, as professional participants in this industry, I would hope to discourage the practice of braying the horribles.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I move that we deny the variance on the section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a multifamily residential density of one unit per four thousand three hundred seventy-two square feet, whereas forty thousand square feet per unit is required. Six units where zero are permitted. Multifamily residents on a lot with a depth of one hundred and twenty-five feet, whereas two hundred feet is required. A front setback of thirty feet, whereas fifty feet is required along DW Highway. And a northerly and southerly side setback of forty feet each, whereas fifty feet is required. The parcel is located at 598 DW Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aqua for Conservation, Elderly Housing Overlay District, and the Wellhead Protection Area. This is ZBA case number 2022 hyphen 20.
Specific reasons for the record?
I don't believe that the material submitted justifies the, the variance being granted.
Specific reasons for the record?
I don't believe that the material submitted justifies the, the variance being granted.
Do you have a specific variance criteria that you want to reference?
Do I have it here? Hang on. I'm not sure how to phrase it. It's my impression that the burden of, is on the petitioner to demonstrate that the five criteria for granting the variances has to be met, and I don't believe they have met it. Is that sufficient?
Any of the, any of the criteria?
I, I would submit almost all of them.
Okay. Is that acceptable, Robert? All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor of the denial? All oppose? All abstain? All right. Four zero one. Chuck abstains. So, on that, there is a thirty-day appeal process where you could appeal the decision. But other than that, the motion will not move forward.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't see it.
No? So be it.
He's right on that point, but it doesn't belong there.
Abstentions, unless it was a financial, that was what we got from Tim. We got the riot act wrote to us.
Right, so...
Unless I missed something.
If you're abstaining, there has to be a reason for it. I would say that Chuck has a justifiable, a justifiable reason to abstain.
Okay, I agree with that.
Just given the fact that, I should say, it can't be held against the board, his decision, because of the fact that he did not recuse himself.
Don't get me wrong, I have no problem with him abstaining. I just, I know we read the riot act when, about that, so that's why I...
Let me make that very clear as to why I abstained.
Well, I don't, you don't...
Yeah, it has nothing to do with you. We were just told we're not supposed to abstain.
It was a conversation, it was well before on the board, we got, kind of, talked about, you know, the abstention side and how we're not supposed to be abstaining, but he did bring up a good point, so we're all, everything's good.
Well, that is, that is precisely the reason why I abstained.
Okay. Yeah.
To, to secure the most fair disposition that I could relative to the applicant.
Fair enough. And by the way, I do understand on the appeal, it probably was unnecessary to request a vote for denying the continuance. But given that I extended it and other circumstances, I wanted to make sure that we really had something...
I think that was a wise decision on your part.
Thank you. I just wanted to cover our bases. So, next things of order, we have the annual meeting, rules of procedure. From what I'm reading here, it looks like the only change we have is we're removing the three-year term limit for, for chair.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So...
Do we need a motion to change the procedures?
We do.
I will so move.
Second. All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Patrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we get to the...
Go ahead, delay it as much as you can.
And I have nowhere left to go, I'm back into the corner again.
I move the, the, the election of officers is delayed till next month when Rod is back.
Makes sense.
I agree with that.
I'll second that.
All right. So, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn, to continue our voting until we have a full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. All right, now on to the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, so four zero one. I'll be abstaining from that.
Any other discussion regarding other issues of concern? I move we adjourn.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a great, was it June?
Jeez.